Good morning, everybody. And welcome to the March 23 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. We'll call it to order and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any staff announcements?
Madam Chair, yes. Commissioner Parker called to say that he wasn't going to be attending the meeting today, so I'm going to mute my computer for a second.
And I believe we have an agenda change?
Yes, Madam Chair. While I go through my technological challenges, we would like to recommend that we take the second item, item number two, first. And that way, if there are commissioners that... I need to turn my volume. Turn my volume. There, how about that? Yeah, both of them are off. Yes, we are recommending that item number two, which is the Jeffries item, be heard by the commission first because there might be some additional commissioners that may have a conflict of interest with the first item.
And then we will be removing the administrative hearing item?
The administrative hearing would be removed because that item has already been resolved.
Thank you. All right. Then, this is the opportunity for general public comment, which is comments by the public on an item not on the agenda today. So is there anybody who would like to speak to the commission on an issue within the subject purview of the Planning Commission but not on our agenda today?
Good morning. My name is Donald Jensen from Copperopolis. I am here to submit a petition that was signed by 1,000 residents in West Signature in Copperopolis and another 390, I think, on our digital website that allows them to sign the petition. This is a cover letter explaining the proposed bio-solids conditional use permit Copperopolis resident petition. Now, I know this was a conceptual design. That's understood, and how it got into a giant mess, I don't know. But the problem was the community wasn't being heard. And we had town hall meetings there in Copperopolis about it where the zoning, planning and zoning attended and CCWD attended. There were 200 residents saying that they didn't want anything to do with this, and it was never really explained clearly by anyone that it was a conceptual design and that this 21-page plan was never, was not submitted to be acted upon. It was just a proposed plan to understand what they wanted to do, and they wanted to find out if they could rezone that property for that kind of use. So I'm asking that you guys will accept this petition, and you can see the, so that the people of Copperopolis have been heard, and that there's a Copperopolis in the future for development and stuff like that. We would like to be involved in making sure that development goes slow, and it's, we're known, just known to us before something like this happens and gets out of order. Just in sense, the community, and as you all know, social media, there's so much misinformation. And I think it would have been way better if that the information that was held by CCWD and zoning commission could have just been disseminated directly and straight to them, saying, "This is exactly what we are trying to do. This isn't a real..." No one ever submitted a permit to do so. But I just want you guys to have this information and know that we're definitely interested in being involved. So, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I'd like to welcome, well, first, my name's Ralph Copeland out of Copperopolis. It's been a while since I've addressed the Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome Commissioner Singh and Commissioner Chmente, is that correct? And I'm glad that you are our new commissioner for D4. I was involved with Supervisor Follendorf's election, and she has nothing but great words to say about both of you. And you'll be hearing from me when things come up with Copperopolis. I am for a world-controlled growth in our community. And also, I'd like to thank Director Elliott for beginning the ball rolling on our Copperopolis community plan, which is extremely important to us. And we look to hopefully present it to the, by the end of the year, to the Board of Supervisors. So again, welcome, and nice to be back.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Annette, is there anybody else online who would like to make a general public comment?
No one here has a public comment this night.
Thank you. So we will close the public comment portion of the agenda and talk about our consent So we only have one item, the minutes of a previous February 9 meeting. And are there any comments or would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I believe that we adopt those minutes as approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The minutes have been approved. And we are going to take these next two items out of order, as Director Elliott mentioned. So we will look at item 2022-031, Plan Development Permit for John and Marna Jeffries. And this is just a continuance request. Is there any comments from you guys? But I'm going to give the public opportunity.
No.
Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on their continuance request? No. Saying none, we will go ahead and close that item also, and...
Madam Chair.
We have to take a vote to continue it, yes.
Madam Chair, do we want to continue it to a date-specific hearing?
I see to April 13.
Yes, which would be the April 13th Planning Commission meeting.
So would someone like to make a motion to continue this item to April 13?
Sure, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Item passes 4010. I don't know, I've got those out of order probably today. Thank you. Okay. So I believe everybody is here for item 1, 2023-010, Appeal of Administrative Use Permit, AUP 22-060, for Jonathan and Allison Nemeth, DBA Nemeth Manor. And I assume, Gabriel, that you'll be leading this discussion. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. I would like to share my screen.
I'm not sure people can hear you.
Oh, I was, I said I would like to share my screen.
Before we begin, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself. Good morning, Madam Chair. I'll be recusing myself due to a financial interest in a competing venue with Nemeth Manor that's listed as Klondair Vineyards. So I'll be stepping away from this meeting for this discussion.
So are the Nemeths here? Hi. So it is the policy of the Planning Commission to offer our applicants the opportunity to reschedule a hearing when there will only be three commissioners present because you will require unanimous vote. However, in this case, we happen to be aware that Commissioner Parker will also be recusing himself on this item, so you will have only three people in any case. So I would suggest we go ahead today. Thank you. Now, Director Elliott.
Thank you.
Is there anything you want to add, Sarah?
No, not at all. I was just going to give Commissioner Sting a moment to get out of here.
We're going to let him get back to his job.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Mr. Planning Commission. The item before you this morning is an appeal of the Planning Director's determination regarding an administrative use permit that was applied for by the applicants, Allison and Jonathan Nemeth. And I have prepared a brief summary. First of all, you both, all of you have the staff reports that have been sent to you that has all the details in it with dates and so on and so forth. So I'm not going to belabor you with kind of trying to regurgitate all the information already there, but I just want to run through a few of the salient points that I think need to be considered. I also would like the commission to know that the applicants have been represented by legal counsel, and they have some professionals who are also in their camp. And from what I can see, on that side of the room, there's quite a few people who would like to speak in favor of the project. And on this side of the room, there are some of the residents who were impacted by this particular business. So without more to do, I'm going to try to go through my slide. And if you have any specific questions as I go along, please feel free to interrupt me, or at least at the very end, there will be an opportunity to ask questions.
Is everybody able to hear him? Great.
Good. Very good. Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, the application is for five events, four private weddings and a fireman's ball. The properties owned are RRX, which is residential zone, and the X designation just means that the property size cannot be further subdivided. There are two uses in the RR zone that require further analysis. One of them is a special event, and the other one is agritourism. Special events are defined in the county code as an organized activity, assembly or event to which public is invited to watch, listen, or participate, and for which compensation may be made for the use of the site and the facility if held on a private property. The purpose of a special event is to provide, let me move this thing out of the way here, to provide for review process to consider activities or uses which may be compatible with other permitted uses within a zone district, but due to their nature may have an impact on the environment or public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Special event permits require consideration of site design, adjacent land uses, availability of public infrastructure and services, and environmental impacts based on a specific location of any proposed activity or use requiring such a permit. Example of special events that are actually specifically identified in our code include races such as pedestrian, bicycle, or motorized, carnivals, concerts or musical events that are acoustic, amplified, recorded, or hosted by a disc jockey, health or educational fairs, arts and crafts exhibits, flea markets, farmers' markets, et cetera, et cetera. So the idea of this, and I cannot question the principle behind these decisions when they were made, but this is our zoning code as it stands today. And so it is very clear to me that if you look at these definitions, these are activities that the entire public, you know, could participate in and not just private events. On this slide, you can see that the top slide kind of shows where the property is located on Dogtown Road, and that the other slide underneath that is just a general location of the property in context of the county itself. So special events per Section 1787 is permitted in the RR. There's no argument about that. Private events are not special events as defined by the county code. A special event must be open to the public. Private weddings are by definition not open to the public. Weddings cannot be approved as special events based on Section 1787. Per county code Section 1787-09082, special event permits can be denied if the time and duration of the use of amplified sound would unduly interfere with the residents' quiet enjoyment of their property for an extended and unreasonable period of time, and the applicant is unable or unwilling to modify the special event size, location, time, or duration to minimize such impact. Analysis of what we know, the events are proposed to include amplified music for up to five hours at a time and go up to 10:00 p.m. at night for up to 300 guests. Many of the applicant's neighbors have reported that events of this nature have already been occurring and have asked the commission to deny the application for reasons that include the length and duration of amplified music. It is reported that the amplified music coming from events of this nature shakes windows, bothers animals, and makes it impossible for neighbors to carry on normal conversation outdoors on their own properties. The applicants are aware of these complaints, but have indicated that they are willing to modi, but have not indicated that they're willing to modify the size, location, time, or duration of amplified music to minimize these problems. Instead, they intend to permanently host many events of this nature on their property. Even if weddings were special events, the permit would need to be denied under Section 1787 due to the proposed use of amplified sound. Similarly, if the fireman's ball is open to the public and is thus a special event under 1787, it would need to be denied under 1787 for the same reason. Four findings required to approve an administrative use permit are described in 1783-020.
Excuse me, since you encouraged us to interrupt.
Yes.
So you've just dealt with the application as it was, which was for a special permit.
Yes.
And now you're moving on to, and the special permit ordinances have special administrative use...
Findings.
Findings.
Yes.
In it.
Yes.
So far, you've said under, first, it is not a special permit, a special event, and then you've said under the special event provisions...
These are the findings.
...it wouldn't qualify.
Yes.
So if you would clarify that you're moving on now to, in case they'd asked for a general administrative use permit...
Right.
What would be the considerations? Is that where we are?
Yes, that's where we're going.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the first finding requires the proposed use to be consistent with the general plan and the zoning ordinance. And from some of the information that I've provided to you in the staff report, which I assume you have read, and resolution, we have demonstrated the incompatibility of this particular location because of the logistics of the site, the intensity of the operation, the amount of complaints that have already been garnered over the years while this operation was taking place without a permit, that we can make, we cannot make that finding of consistency between what is being proposed, especially when you consider the fact that they actually want to further intensify this use by making it a commercial events venue. And I think that information is included in your staff report package as one of the The second finding requires that the proposed use to be adequate in size, land area to accommodate the activity. The property itself, I think I have an exhibit that I can show. The property itself is 24-plus acres, and there's an existing vineyard on a corner of the property towards Dogtown Road. So the concentration of the activities, now there are other miscellaneous activities going on on the property, there are sheds and barns and things of that nature, but the concentration of the activity here is focused on the main residence, a tent, a temporary tent, the swimming pool, and the five-acre lake. So even though you have a 24-acre parcel, you have these activities concentrated on a specific part. So which makes the finding regarding adequate sizes and so on and so forth, in reality, because of the concentration of the use itself, it makes that finding a little nebulous. You have to also consider the fact that there'll be parking on the property, so I don't think the issue really is the size and location of the property, it is the concentration of all the events because they're very, very focused. The third finding requires a finding that the proposed use would not eventually, would not potentially affect the public health, welfare, and safety. Now, this finding we are unable to make as well because we have evidence from residents who are impacted by this use that their way of life has been affected significantly by this event. There are letters in your, in your package that have been written by some of those neighbors that actually demonstrate that. And then there's also a letter from the City of Angels Camp, which I would, which I would show later on, that actually talks specifically about the Dogtown Road and the access issues the city faces. Because not being part of the City of Angels Camp, but being a part of the county, the city doesn't get any benefit from any fees that they could charge for improvement of that roadway, even though there's significant problems at the intersection of Highway 49 and Dogtown Road. And to the point where the city is currently considering building a roundabout at that intersection of 49 and 4. And when that happens, it's going to limit egress onto Highway 49 to only a right-turn lane from Dogtown Road. So you have a use that, by all evidence, generates quite a few traffic trips. This is not a one-time facility where we have a wedding today and then we don't have another one in six months. This is going to be an event center with weddings occurring almost on a regular basis, including other events as well. So the fourth finding requires that conditions have to be applied to the permit to protect the environment, general health, safety, and welfare. Now, it is unclear, and I couldn't fathom what conditions we could place on this use that would actually mitigate some of the concerns. Planting trees would not be a sound-absorbing mechanism, and even if that were the case, the trees would have to be mature trees that are already 15 feet tall, and they have to be like Italian cypresses or something of that nature. That doesn't exist. There are no enclosed structures whereby, you know, you have a building, you know, that is big enough with doors closed, windows closed, has its internal ventilation system that would allow for activities to actually take place inside an enclosed building without noise and sound penetrating into the adjacent residential uses. So, and the situation regarding access onto the property and paving of Dogtown Road might seem to be excessive when one considers, you know, that you have this one activity on the road, and then you have all these improvements that have to be made. So making that nexus between the use itself and the amount of improvements that would have to be made to actually make this use compatible with that, with its current setting, makes it very challenging.
Excuse me again.
Yes, sir.
I understand that you're, you're saying how the use may, is planned to increase considerably in the future.
Yes.
But your determinations in this case are on the uses that were requested at this particular time.
At this particular time, yes. It is. So this part, we have the complaint from the neighbors. So as part of the AUP process, the planning department sends public notices to property owners within a 300-foot radius of the project. This is very consistent with planning practices because we use that as a way to actually understand what the impact would be to an environment. I cannot sit in my office and issue an administrative decision without having a peripheral understanding of what is actually going on in the community. Because of the sizes of the parcels involved, the 300-feet radius map covered 11 properties. Out of those 11, one is owned by the applicants, and so we have 10, in essence. Of the 10, eight surrounding property owners responded to the notice. And the map on the right shows the location of where those notices came from. The Nemeth property is identified as Nemeth 24.13 RRX, and all those other white labels that you see there represent the places where the comments came from. The identity of the property owners are being protected at this time on this particular map, even though some of them might be present today to provide comments to the community.
It appears that every adjoining property owner replied with objections, is that correct?
All the, all the, let, all the properties surrounding the project replied with objections.
Okay.
There is not one that said, "This is good for us." Many of the applicant's responses have mentioned that there's already occurring events, you know, at the site, and this is prior to the application for an AUP. And they recommend that the commission deny the application for reasons that include the length and duration of amplified music. It is also reported that the amplified music coming from the events makes the windows shake. I think I mentioned that earlier in my presentation. Most of the events actually happens in the, in the white tent that you see in that picture below. I don't have a full picture of the tent, but it kind of gives you an idea of the nature of the insulation that the tent has and how it is very, very possible for noise to penetrate the tent. And also that not all the activities are actually, take place within the tent itself. Some of the, some of the participants come out, they, you know, use the swimming pool, use the lake, and gather around and do all kinds of other activities. use the lake and gather around and do all kinds of other activities. So the comments from the neighbors are justified because most of the events are held outdoors. And the tent, which is a temporary structure that was approved in 2022, is the only covered event structure. There are no walls or other sound barriers protecting the neighbors from the traffic sounds and amplified music. So the City of Angels Camp sent a letter concurring with the denial of the AUP because they stated that Dogtown Road is not built for large crowds and has extremely poor ingress and egress across access onto Highway 49. The traffic burden on Highway 49 and 12, that cross-section, isn't a city limit, but it's not receiving mitigation funding for road repairs or restoration activities that would normally occur with permit fees collected within the city. This year, the city also cited concerns with the project's potential burden on law enforcement, fire marshal, and building. And these concerns are derived from activities that have already taken place on the site, not what is anticipated. So if there's this level of concern with items, with activities that have already taken place, you can imagine what future activities are going to look like. So the other item I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation regarding the two uses that are allowed in the RR zone, the other item was agritourism. Agritourism is being brought into this conversation because there is a potential for agritourism because of the vineyards on the property. Agritourism is permitted in the RR. It is a conditional use when there's greater than 75 guests at a time on the site. This was considered because the applicant do have a working vineyard on the property. Agritourism is defined as "an enterprise located on a working farm, ranch, or other agricultural operation or agricultural plant or facility conducted for the enjoyment and education of visitors, guests, or clients that generates income for the owner or the operator." Agricultural tourism refers to the act of visiting a working farm, ranch, or any agricultural, horticultural, or agricultural operation for the purpose of enjoyment, education, or active involvement in the activities of a farm or a ranch or agricultural operation that also adds to the economic viability of the agricultural region. Even if the proposed use is allowed in the RR zone, the AUP application will still need to be denied under Chapter 1783 because the planning department cannot make the findings required for an AUP. The project is, so this is the CEQA determination. I'm kind of wrapping up to the end of my presentation now. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guidelines 15270, which exempts disapproved projects from CEQA. Should the denial of this permit be overturned in whole or in part, the planning department would determine what, if any, environmental documents must be prepared to comply with CEQA. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2023-004, denying 2023-010 appeal and upholding the planning director's denial of the AUP. We are available to answer any questions should you have them. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions?
I think I've already pestered you down.
Then we will open the public hearing portion and give the applicant an opportunity to speak or their representative.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to present our position to you this morning. I'm Diane Kinderman. I think the jumping frog of Calvers County is in my throat today. Could be allergies. I'm not sick. Once again, I'm Diane Kinderman with the law firm of Abbott and Kinderman. And with me this morning are Allison and Jonathan Nemeth and Brian Holloway with Holloway Land Company, who is our assistant planner on this project as well, on this matter, I should say. We have handed out to each of you several folders here. I'm going to refer to a couple of items in the folder in a moment. We thought we'd go the old-fashioned way instead of doing a brief PowerPoint. I have two extras. If you wanted me to provide them to anyone in the community, I'll leave that to your discretion. You can tell me when the time comes if you want me to make those available. And also yesterday, we submitted correspondence to you late in the day. We apologize for being late. That was the earliest we were able to get it to you. And don't know if you've had an opportunity to review it, but it's in the record. And I'm just going to summarize it very briefly today. I know I have a limited period of time. And I'm basically going to focus on three points today for you and our three requests, which are outlined in our letter. And I want to thank staff and Gabriel and county council for answering our recent questions that we've had on this matter. We appreciate their cooperation with us, and we thank them for that as well. And staff has summarized the procedural and substantive history here, so I don't want to go through all of that again. But I want to get straight to the three actions that we are requesting of the Planning Commission today. And the first action is that we want the Planning Commission to reverse the determination of the planning director and to conclude that weddings and other private events are, in fact, special events under your code. And they can be interpreted as such and that they are compatible uses. That's the first thing, and I'll discuss that further in a moment. The second thing is we would like you to approve our administrative use permit for the one remaining event. That is, it's a wedding. And based on the original application, there's one remaining event. We'd like you to approve it with the 25 conditions that we have attached to our letter. And in our letter, in Attachment 1, we've provided both a proposed resolution for approval of this one event and a series of 25 conditions of approval, which you can add to if you wanted to, to address all the concerns of the neighbors. And so that's the second thing we're requesting. The third thing we're requesting is...
Excuse me, just a second. I don't like to interrupt you in the...
No, feel free.
But I'm looking for what has those 25 conditions. What is that letter?
And our letter, Attachment... And our letter is included in your folder as well. Attachment number one has a resolution that we drafted, a proposed resolution. And attached to that, at the end, are the conditions of approval.
Speaking about the folder we just got today?
Yes. Is our letter in the folder, Brian?
Not in the letter, no.
It was supposed to be. Do you have the letter?
It's in our packet. It does not have attachment.
Actually, Commissioner Laddish, I believe that the letter she's referring to, it was actually sent via email to the clerk of the Planning Commission yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
May I approach and show you these conditions? I have them here. And I apologize. I thought the letter was going to... And they're typical conditions that you would see on a project such as, on an application such as this. I'll use the term "project." I'm just referring to the permit that we've requested. It's force of habit. And we, in other jurisdictions, special events are also allowed in rural communities. And these are the types of conditions that are imposed. The conditions can be as expansive as they need to be and as creative as the county would like to impose them to address concerns of the community. And obviously, the community here does have some concerns. And we believe they can all be addressed by conditions of approval. So the third thing that we're requesting today... Shall I speak or would you like to look at those first for a moment?
Actually, is it possible for someone to come and copy them so that we'll have them?
They're just two pages.
Sorry about this.
Oh, it's fine.
Well, while we're doing that, are you aware of the Planning Commission's hearing procedures dated September 2017?
Yes, I am.
Should I disclose the written comments, letters, briefs, or other documents? Maybe filed electronically or whatever? No later than 5:00 PM on the Monday before the hearing with the clerk of the Planning Commission?
I handed it to them. I don't have it now. Yes, I am, and I apologize. And that's what I said upfront, that this was the earliest. There were reasons we could not get it too sooner, and we apologize for that.
I also would just briefly, if I could, bring up to the commission that under 1787, there is a provision that's saying a change to the application needs to be made 10 days before the hearing. And I think the idea is that the planning department has enough time to consider any changes. So we have a proposed resolution that talks about events going into October. We have certain portions of the handout that we're talking about. It's just one event. So we're a little confused about how many events are part of this application. And then in 1787 at 060, it does speak to a deadline to change the application prior to the event. And I know that it's especially focused on increases, but it also talks about... It also talks about the need to have the 10 days.
He just ran out the back.
It's very tough to, after spending a lot of time considering this case, to be confronted with more information, more conditions, proposed conditions, and I guess which can amount to a change in the application.
Understood, Commissioner.
And we have every ability to disregard all of that.
Understood.
So given the number of people here today, I think it's in the best interest of everybody if we can see those and let you complete your presentation.
Oh, yes.
With the understanding that this may need to be continued anyway to give everybody enough time to adequately review everything. But let's hear what everybody else has to say. There's a lot of people who took time away from whatever they had planned for today, and we want to hear from them.
I fully agree.
So you can go ahead and talk, and we'll see them when they come back.
Thank you. I understand what you're saying, what council's saying, and we will proceed. Thank you. So I've mentioned the first two items that were, actions we're requesting to be taken. You know, one is to overturn the planning director's determination that weddings and other types of special events are not, or private events are special events, to overturn that determination. Two, to approve the permit for the one additional event that's going to transpire in a few days, with conditions. And the third thing is we would like to recommend that the Planning Commission proceed with a modification of your municipal code. And the reason is this. In light of how the code was drafted, the county planning director is left to wrestle with the terms therein. And their interpretation of the code as special events actually creates...
That's what they said. I don't think that...
Thank you.
Squirtin' wood, you know.
Sorry. Okay, I think we're ready. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. So we're suggesting that the Planning Commission proceed to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to amend the municipal code to recognize weddings and other similar events as special events under the code. And the reason is this. The way it's currently articulated in the code, it leaves the planning director to have to make determinations on a case-by-case basis, which is not efficient for the county. And this particular determination effectively bans all weddings and other special events in the unincorporated county. And I'm going to talk about each of these three items. As to this third item, what we are suggesting that in a month, in two meetings, that the Planning Commission return, review the proposed ordinance that we presented, the few changes we presented, return and make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to amend the ordinance to clarify it. And we believe that weddings and other similar types of activities should be deemed special events under the code. So that's our third request. So now I'm going to go back and just talk about each one for a moment here because I know I've got limited time under your rules, which I'm trying to follow here. So on the special events determination, this really is the fulcrum of our debate here. And so the language in the code, the planning director has carefully gone through it. But once again, we're requesting that you overturn that interpretation. And I'm just going to look at a little bit of the language, and I'm going to say it out loud again so all of the neighbors who are concerned about weddings in this venue or in this property understand what else could be allowed on this property. So in the code, it talks about how special event is an organized activity or event to which the public is invited. They can participate, observe, listen. And it may be held on private property as well. And examples of these special events include motorized races. So you can have a car race on Nemeth's property. You can have a pedestrian or bicycle race on their property. There can be a carnival, a circus, a parade, a festival, car shows on that property under your code. There can be concerts and musical events with amplified music or a DJ.
May I clarify? Those items can be considered for a special event permit on their property.
Absolutely. That was my next... And we understand that. But the point is that the code seems to think these are all acceptable to submit to the planning director for an application. But a wedding, a bar mitzvah, a retirement party or baby shower is not suitable to submit for a permit? Something just seems like a little additional clarification or verbiage in the code might be helpful. And maybe that is what the county intends. We know that codes, ordinances evolve over time and uses in the community evolve over time. And so that's why our third point is perhaps it's time to revisit that. And clearly, the type of events that I've just mentioned that, such as a wedding, baby shower, bar mitzvah, retirement party, those certainly are much more benign than a circus, a car race, flea markets, et cetera. So the... So once again, we think that a wedding can be interpreted as a special event and that it should be done so here. And I want to mention, there was a discussion about the term "special event" and that the public is invited to watch, listen, or participate. And we believe that the county's interpretation of this is overly narrow. When you think about a private event, that would be a dinner party hosted by a homeowner, perhaps. There's no fee involved. But a wedding, in fact, is a public event because members of the public have to pay to have the event there. And then they invite people to that event. So a wedding or some other type of event where you're paying to have the activity at the property definitely fits within the definition of special event here. Now, there are more than 25 wedding venues currently operating in the unincorporated county on properties with rural and ag zoning, including the identical zoning designation of the applicant's property. And a revision to the ordinance, once again, would allow weddings or similar events to be lawful on those zones. And in fact, Calaveras County on several promotional platforms actually promotes weddings, including those held at the Nemeth Manor in their materials. So in the folder handed to you, we've got a few items here. So first is a page from the California, or Calis, sorry, the Calaveras Visitor Center, the Calaveras Visitor Center, where it promotes weddings and has pictures of many venues. But here we've got the Nemeth Manor. And also, there is a page from GoCalaveras, which is paid by the county through TOT tax. And it specifically promotes weddings at Nemeth Manor and elsewhere. So that's just the first little item that's in the folder here. Do you want to see that? All right. All right. Then, also in your materials, is a map. Here's the map. Here, here's the map. Okay. And it's called Existing Wedding Venues, and it depicts locations of all the wedding venues in the unincorporated county. And there are 33 wedding venues, and it lists on the next page, the zoning for each. So all of the wedding venues are provided for you here, and the zoning is listed, and there are 33 of them. On the map, Nemeth Manor has the X on the red dot. It is down here. You know your own county, you know where things are. It's just down here near Angels Camp. It has a little X on it. So, on the list of wedding venues in the non-commercial zones, the tally is 24 as follows. There's eight in the rural residential zone, just like the Nemeth's property, nine venues in the A1 Zone, five in the IRA Zone, and two in the ag preserve zone. Clearly, Calaveras County is a very popular wedding venue, both for local residents, as well as people outside the county. So it seems incongruous for the county to interpret a wedding as not being a special event, when there are so many such wedding facilities in the same zones as the applicant's property, and in other ag and rural zones. So let me repeat this. The planning director's determination makes all weddings unlawful in the unincorporated county area, and the determination should be reversed. Plus, we have also recommended that the county support its 24 wedding venues in those zones by clarifying the code. So now that we've confirmed that we think the wedding should be a special event and allowed in that zone, we are stating that the AUP, or the permit, should be adopted. And that's exactly where the commissioner was leading, that, yes, all these uses may be identified as allowed in this zone, but you still have to go through this permit process. And that's what we've attempted to do here. And as part of that permit process, we're suggesting that there are conditions of approval that the county can add on its own volition. Now, I know county councils mentioned that there's a requirement, that if there's any change to an application, that it had to be provided 10 days prior. But I've done this type of practice probably over 25 years, and I cannot tell you how many countless times we've drafted a condition of approval in front of a commission, or a city council, or a board on the spot, and it was incorporated as part of the project. I don't know if that might be allowed in Calaveras County, but that's what I might recommend here. So I don't believe that that timeframe should be a prohibition to adding conditions of approval to a permit. It's done all the time elsewhere, so I ask you to consider doing that here. So, once again, we understand the planning director, the commission, or the Board of Supervisors, whatever phase you're in, has the authority, under your own ordinances, to issue the permit for special events. And the first topic, we've already discussed, the special event issue, we have addressed that. That here, the planning director has denied it because we're not deemed to be a special event. We think that should be reversed, for the reasons I've articulated. The next issue is always very important, and those are neighbor concerns and community concerns, about the public health, safety, and welfare, and how is this community going to be impacted by this event? That is always a significant concern. And the determination also focuses heavily on these concerns by the neighbors. But what I'm concerned about are the allegations by the neighbors, because there are several of them which really don't have any basis in fact. And good planning requires facts, substantial evidence to support those facts, and not just complaints. So we've got a lot of complaints here. We have no substantial evidence to support any of this. So, in reality, the applicants have tried to work with their neighbors, and at one point, on the noise issue, they offered to seek a permit to install a sound wall. The neighbors didn't care for that, so they proceeded to purchase 60 to 70 trees of their own volition, and to put trees up in hopes of creating a sound barrier on the property. So the applicants and appellants here are not opposed to working with their neighbors, and they're not opposed to conditions of approval. And once again, good planning requires facts, substantial evidence to support those, and not just complaints. And every one of the neighbor's issues can be addressed by proposed conditions of approval, either those that we suggested, or some others that, working with staff, we would be happy to have applied at a later point in time, and then over the next few days. The other thing that was considered appropriately by the planning director was communication from other jurisdictions, and a letter was received from the City of Angels concerning both the road impacts and fire safety. This letter looks a little unique to me. I've done this a long time, once again. And what I don't see here is any traffic analysis, no traffic study, no substantial evidence justifying what they think the impacts are going to be to this road, no confirmation of what other contribution, how many Amazon trucks the neighbors have coming and going on. There's just no traffic information, no data here at all to support the letter from the city on that issue. And regarding the fire response concerns, because of the city's distance from the property, there are actually two other fire districts that are closer and would be the first to respond. My sense here is that this correspondence from the city really seems to be a personal letter that somebody put on city letterhead. I've seen a lot of letters come in from other jurisdictions commenting on projects, permits. This doesn't look like one of them. This looks like, to me, a personal letter, and we request that you disregard it. Other than that, there was a comment about sequo piece mailing here, that they provided in the record a letter that my office had provided to the county discussing potential future projects. And the reason that we sent that in was because we'd had a conversation with staff regarding the different types of permits available. There was either the administrative use permit, which would be for a few events, or a CUP for more events. And what we were trying to convey to staff was, if we were going to proceed with wanting permanently to have 10 weddings a year, where we don't have to keep running back for an administrative use permit, wasting staff's time and everybody else's time and money, we would maybe seek a conditional use permit. But before we even proceeded with that, we would collect our facts and information, and then request a pre-application meeting with the county to see if such requests were even feasible. That is all that letter was about. That letter does not in any way unequivocally state that there is a future project for different types of events, or additional events. It was simply a conversation that had been memorialized with staff. So there would be no sequo piece mailing issue here as a result of that letter. And so, once again, we doubt that the Planning Commission wants to shut down more than 25 wedding venues in the county, especially when they're promoted on the county's own websites. And they promote the economic vitality of the county, and they bring visitors in, and they provide a venue for locals as well, whether it be a wedding, retirement party, baby shower, what have you. And so, in conclusion, based on everything I've just discussed, here again are the three actions that we are requesting. Number one, will you grant the appeal and overturn the planning director's interpretation of what a special event is, and determine that, in fact, weddings and other similar types of activities are deemed special events. That's number one. Number two, you approve the permit for the one additional event that was left to happen chronologically here, the one remaining special event which is set to happen on March 25th, which is actually this weekend. And you can feel free to apply the conditions of approval, and any other conditions of approval we might want to discuss here. Feel free to apply those conditions of approval to the permit itself. And then, number three, we would request that the commission support the 33 wedding and special event venues already existing in the county, in the unincorporated rural areas, and schedule an agenda item for your Planning Commission meeting in a month to suggest a modification of the permit. In our materials, we provided some suggested language. We have the ordinance, and then we just redlined some changes, something to start a discussion. And we request that you consider recommending to the board that they modify this particular section to relieve your planning director from having to make determinations on an ad hoc basis, and allow these wedding venues, which are already well-established in your community, to continue to go forward. So with that, your time and your consideration is very much appreciated. We're here to answer any questions. And I look forward to an opportunity to rebut for a few minutes after everybody's spoken, if I may have that.
Yes. Are there any questions for Ms. Kinderman?
I do have a few questions. Now, you agree that we are here today to apply the law as it exists right now, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so, the application here is for a special event?
Correct.
And that, the administrative use permit for special events is governed by the Chapter 17.87, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, in your treatment as to whether this was a special event, which it needs to be in order for you to succeed today, you indicate that weddings are included in the phrase "an event to which the public is invited to watch."
Correct.
If 150 people showed up at the next wedding, they were not invited by the couple?
Yes.
Would they be welcomed with open arms?
Well, they were not invited to that wedding, and no, they would not be welcomed, because they were not invited.
Well, aren't they members of the public?
Right.
That the public needs to be invited to watch a special event?
That is correct. But the facility is open to the public for anyone to come, schedule, and pay for having an event at that location.
That's to participate.
The background is open to the public.
But that's to participate in the event, not to watch the event. These are special events that are, requires that the public be invited to watch.
And the public is invited by the couple that has come and paid for that event. Well, and this is why we think the code section needs to be modified.
Well, I understood that. That is completely separate, and I sympathize with what you say the current law is, and how it might restrict appropriate events within the county. But we, as you agreed, must apply the statute as it exists.
And as you interpret it. And you have the authority to interpret it that way, as did the planning director. And I'm suggesting, we don't agree with that interpretation, but you may agree with the planning director's interpretation, and you have the authority to interpret it.
So, those 150 people would be turned away, or not welcome?
Well, not if they weren't invited to the wedding.
I don't think this is a productive line of discussion.
But I understand your answer.
The opportunity to interpret that language the way they...
Well, but I don't have an opportunity to ask counsel these things. Now, I understood...
I do have some rebuttal when I have a moment.
Right, right. But that, right now, is his opportunity to speak with Ms. Kinderman.
Now, the last event, I thought, was a fireman's ball.
Yes.
But you said that's a wedding.
I believe that was not held. No, that was on January 28th.
That did not occur because of this issue.
Okay, so there's one wedding left.
And that was going to be in the tent.
There's a lot of weddings coming.
Yes, unfortunately, the fireman's ball, yeah.
Now, have you ever read an expert analysis as to the effectiveness of trees blocking noise?
Well, I did not recommend those trees. My point was that the applicant is trying to be a good neighbor, and wants to be a good neighbor, and will agree to conditions of approval that would address the issues.
So, your answer would be no?
Well, I am not an arborist or an artistic expert.
I haven't read such a thing. I'm going to assume your answer is no, because you're giving me different answers. Did the application include a site plan showing what parts of the parcel would be used for this event?
Yes, it did.
It's not in the application as we have it in our package.
All right. My client has indicated it was submitted. Excuse me.
That certainly becomes relevant, and the site plan is required, a required part of the application.
May Mr. Nemeth say something, address the commission?
Yeah. Director Elliott, was there a site plan provided?
I'm checking. The information we have in your package includes the application and a list of the events themselves. I'm not sure if the parking plan was somewhat omitted, but there are pictures from code violation incidents that actually show the parking on the property. So I'll go to the office and try to see what I can retrieve, if that's okay with you.
Thank you. Mr. Nemeth, would you like to tell us what you submitted with your packet?
Yes.
With your application.
Come, come, go ahead and step up.
State your name.
I'm Jonathan Nemeth. We did submit a parking plan with a site plan, because that was part of the requirements, as we understood, for the AUP.
And did it show what part of your parcel total was going to be used for the events?
It identified where our event tent was, where our ceremony site was, where our reception gravel pad was. It identified those, and then it was listed on the application where we were having.
Okay. So, from that?
Yes.
If we had it, we could have...
Yes.
...revision what part of the property would be used?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I have no further.
Any questions, Commissioner Mendel?
My only comment is, is that while I appreciate you put into the record the other venues, and the venue that we're talking about today is the Nemeth venue.
Correct.
And the response from the community members around that regarding that. So, I, thank you.
Correct. Thank you. Appreciate your time listening, and we're here to answer any other questions.
Right. So you will have another opportunity, but let's go ahead and hear from the public. Can I get a sense of how many people would like to speak today? Okay. So, let's take turns and come on up to the podium. And you'll each have five minutes to tell us what you think is important for us to know. If somebody before you has already explained the same thing that you plan to explain, we would appreciate it if you would step up and say, "I concur. That's been my experience," or, in your own words, whatever you feel you need to say. But let's try not to spend five minutes each saying exactly the same thing, if we can, just in the interest of everybody's time. But if you have something to add, feel free to add it. So, go ahead. Come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item, and I'll try not to repeat what Ms. Kinderman said, or what Mr. Elliott said. I thought his PowerPoint was very informative. My name is Stuart Radju, and my wife and I live one parcel over from Nemeth's commercial wedding venue on Dongtown Road, or proposed commercial wedding on Dongtown Road and Angels Camp. My wife and I are also park owners in a parcel directly connected to Nemeth with our son Chad. I have marked on the map included in the packet for reference. I'd like to give you these pictures as we go.
Thank you. Thank you.
These are pictures of the wedding event, the... Thank you. Okay. So these pictures are from our backyard to Mr. Nemeth's tent, or circus tent, whatever you might call it. It's huge. In my younger days, I could have thrown a baseball and hit in the tent. It's so close to my son's backyard and my backyard.
Is this your fence line?
That's my son's fence, that's my son's fence line. I'm just one over. Okay.
Thank you.
We're here to support Director Elliott's denial of this application, and urge the commission to also support Director Elliott's recommendation to deny the Nemeth's application to operate this full-blown commercial business in a rural residential zone neighborhood. Over the past year, the Nemeth's have operated this commercial business without permits and without regard... and without regard for our neighborhood. This is not just a event here and there, this is every weekend, Thursday night, some Thursday nights, a Friday night, Saturday nights, some Sundays, some Wednesdays. Events, live bands have been loud, disruptive, intrusive, and dangerous. At the March fourth event, the Nemeths had a fireworks display set up, set off around eleven P M., scaring our animals. Just so you listen there, I can't prove this, but we lost a four-year-old ewe. Not sure if that did it or not, if she hit her head and broke her neck, but the first one in nine years we've ever lost. We have steers and twenty-five sheep, we're spooked, running around, trying to get out, dog hiding under the car. I've also submitted pictures to the commission to see how close we are to the temporary tent that's been up for a year, and parking right on the fence line. Sitting on our back patio, and all we see is this large eyesore event tent that has been, again, for almost a year. And as I have stated, these events are loud, disruptive, as in, you can see in one of the pictures with the open flame enclosed in the tent. If you look in that picture, there's, you can see a flame in the tent. Dangerous. In one of the pictures, you can see how dry grass is, with this many people parking cars in the field, we fear fire, not now, because we've been rained to death, but if this is passed in the future when we do get dry grass. There's only one way in and one way out, this residential, and our homes being destroyed by fire. Nemeth is an operator over the past year negligently, knowingly and intentionally violating county zone, county zoning codes and health and safety code, all while intentionally misleading clients that they are permitted, authorized, commercial business. I believe the Nemeth's blatant disregard for the county zoning code, fire safety, and public safety is fraudulent, and I do not believe they will stop until it's enforced. And I've called the Sheriff's Department several times for noise, what have you, that's all on record. Miss, I can't remember the young lady's name, says there's twenty-five event locations in the county that are doing the same thing, okay? We're a complaint-driven county, nobody does anything unless there's a complaint. We filed a complaint because we're being disrupted. It's, I can't, I can't tell you unless you're actually there to sit back on my patio or my swimming pool on a weekend and listen to somebody else's music, people screaming, people coming to the fence and doing what they do through the fence instead of using the toilets. We move horses out of the fields because they run around, it's crazy. And again, I would ask if the county, if the director has received any complaints from any of the other venues, because it's, this, this tent is so close to our property. One more thing, and then I'll be done, I won't take up thirty minutes, like was only for. Oh, by the way, all the trees that Mr. Nemeth put up are dead, let them die. If the next vent, the next event is this Saturday, what is my recourse if he goes ahead with this, with this event, like he's done the last two that he wasn't permitted for? I don't know if anybody can answer that, but I would like to ask that question.
I can't answer that. I mean, I think I know the answer, but I can't give you the official answer right now, but we will get to that at the end.
Okay, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Before you, before you sit down, and I've asked the chair if I can read something from the proposed conditions.
Sure.
Because I think this would be good for both the proponents and the opponents to hear.
Sure.
One of the conditions would be that noise shall be controlled in accordance with the Calaveras County Noise Ordinance pursuant to these sections. All indoor and outdoor events must meet the noise limits at property lines during daytime and nighttime hours. Note, any amplified sound or loudspeakers shall be controlled so that the impact to surrounding properties will be minimized. Orientation of speakers shall be away from any neighboring residences. Volumes shall also be monitored to meet county standards at all time. All amplified sound and music shall cease at nine P M. Now, if that were, I'd like the opponents to consider, if that were in effect now, which it is not, would that change your position?
No, this is in a rural residential zone. It's not, this is, this is not a one-off wedding for Mr. Nemeth's niece, for his daughter, I think. This is a business that goes every Friday night, every Saturday night, sometimes Sundays, and sometimes in the middle of the week. Mr. Raju, it's, it's been going on for a year. I've talked to Mr. Nemeth, I met him at the fence and talked to him about it. Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll take care of it, we'll do something, we may move, blah, 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 blah. It, it just keeps going on, it needs to stop. We're, I can't go in my house and get away from the music. I can still hear the pounding, I can still hear people screaming, and I, and I don't want to go in my house and sit. I like to be outside. And it's, the tent is as close as it can possibly get to my son's fence line. I measured it off from my backyard, by my patio, it's a hundred and twenty-five yards to his tent. My son's, which he'll tell you when he speaks, is even closer. So, it's, it's just a constant noise nuisance.
Thank you.
If that's all you have, I'll sit down, and I'd like to thank you folks.
Thank you for your time. My name's John Udi, and I am a neighbor, I was the one on the northern side of the map that you saw, adjacent to Mr. Raju, and please bear with me, I'm not as articulate as Mr. Nemeth's attorney, but I can tell you, from a common sense point of view, what has occurred over the last little less than a year, and it started accelerating last summer, is the commercial event center that has been created and completely didn't take anything into consideration with regard to neighbors, with regard to sound, all the other impacts that it, it put on us. Mr. Elliott's conclusion, I think, is spot-on with respect to zoning and general plan, and there are special events that are allowed, and special is special, it's not everything. And what Mr. Nemeth is proposing is create all of these wedding events for the next, God knows how long, are special events, and to, for the attorney to tie special events to all weddings in Calaveras County are now illegal because they are being, are occurring, is short of ridiculous. This has to do with the impacts on a rural residential zone. My wife and I have lived here for eighteen years, and we bought our property because of the rural residential zoning, and what we thought was going to be what it is. And now, this special event center, which has no limitations ultimately, and Mr. Nemeth has proven time and time again, he will ignore whatever ruling you give today, as he did with Mr. Elliott's ruling back a month and a half ago, and he had the events that were, he was told he couldn't have, he had them anyway, and that's what will happen, and any conditions that would be put on his use if he got approved, I have no doubt would probably be ignored. So, all we're asking for is the general plan and zoning that we have to be consistently applied, so we can have general peace and quiet. Yes, the noise is extremely loud, we are, there's a riparian corridor between his property and mine, so, you know what sound does on water, it travels fast, and we hear that in from last, call it July, August, through the fall, it was basically several days a week, there were events that kept us up. I go to bed at nine, I get up at four-thirty, and, you know, that's just a personal issue, but the point is, we shouldn't have to tolerate it. We didn't buy an R R zone assuming we were going to have a commercial event center, and it's not a special event center. Special events are, you have a wedding, you have a fiftieth birthday, you have a whatever birthday or event, that's, that's cool. I mean, I would encourage everybody to be able to do those occasionally, but not run the operation that he's, you know, concurring, trying to move into a permanent event center, so. With that, any questions, and I'll sit down and-
Thanks.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nora Warnock. I live on, live up in Angels Camp, I work at the Calaveras County Fairgrounds, so I hear a lot of music, I have probably listened to every one of your parties and your, all that, I live at the fairgrounds. So, answering to, I have my horses boarded over at Nemeth Manor, I've had them there for about seven years now. They are fenced off by hotwire fencing, no big fencing or anything. As for him having to move his horses to the other side, I don't believe that it is so noisy there that, otherwise, my horses would be over at the neighbor's house. They, I have a rescue, they have helped us with our rescue, they've let us bring animals over there, they've done everything that they possibly could to, to alleviate problems. He wanted to put up a fence, a wall, he couldn't even get him to call him back. He's done a lot of stuff trying to alleviate this. They moved up here to bring their family, to have their baby here, to raise their family in this community. I'm almost ashamed of this community and the way they behave towards them. I just, I don't understand it, I know, and they only have weddings, like, usually on weekends, they aren't even here, they're both working down in the valley. So, they aren't even really here unless it's a weekend and they're, they're doing a wedding on a weekend. I personally, maybe they've had one during the week once in a while. As far as how loud it is there, I'm over there constantly because I have horses there. If I thought they were in danger of running through the fence, I would be over there making sure they don't. I just think that this community needs to realize that these guys are young people, they're willing to work, they're willing to do what they're supposed to do, and they're being treated like this by the community. It makes me sad, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Valdez, I am the owner of An Occasion Events, I'm a wedding planner in your county. I have planned many weddings at all or some of the wedding venues. The ones that are in the R R zone, I have worked there. Many of them have one way in and one way out, many of them have one-way paved roads in and out, and out of all of those, this one's in question? You have to tell me that you have not had a complaint from anyone else on other venues for the fact that I have known Jonathan and Ally from before they bought their property. Jonathan called me and said, "Can you consult?" And we consulted, we did the research, many, many months, they did the research on this venue, talking to their neighbors, talking to the county, coming to the county to see what they needed to do. And then, all of a sudden, I read all those letters, all those complaints, and all the dates that they were done, within the last, like, end of the year. The tent that this gentleman is talking about, there's a parking lot, it's not on the exact fence line at all. I've been there, I've done weddings there, I planned Jonathan and Ally's wedding, I follow the rules, I work with the clients. Somebody complained about a five-hour music, about two hours of that five hours is amplified music for dancing. You've got a ceremony that has music, but it's not blaring, because you have to listen to people speak. You've got a cocktail hour, people are speaking, it's not loud, blaring music. So, it, it, it's mind-boggling to me that all of a sudden, in this county, and how long this county has had all of these events, here's one, got a few complaints, eight out of how many residents live in the county? Let's shut them down, instead of working with them. You know, they are, they are transplants here, doing good. You have people that come to special events, you say that a wedding is not a special event? Seriously? Really? That is the most special event that you could ever have in your life, with two people. Yes, the public is invited to those events by invitation only, and that's a good thing, because you're controlling how many people are coming to that property, and it's not a free-for-all, like a motorcycle thing, I mean, could you imagine a motorcycle or a race on a property right next to your house? How awful would that be? Blaring, yes, animals might. I live on a cattle ranch that has six hundred and fifty head of cattle. Get it? They would freak out at motorcycles and cars and all that stuff, but not loud noise. We have radios and sound in our barns so that the animals get used to all of that stuff. These people have horses there, I've seen the horses, they're right there, they don't go anywhere, they don't go through the fence. You know, you bring all these people to these events in your county, do you know what that does for your bed tax, for your hotels that you have here? Where does that money go? That money goes back into the city and the county to pay for your police, to pay for your fire. You take all those events away, you're not going to have that bed tax. I would hope that you would consider rewording your zones to have weddings considered as a special event. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Before the next speaker, could we have the light system activated for the speakers, so they know when they're running out of time?
Yeah. It, um, I know that-
Hang on a second.
Sorry, just in-
You guys are five minutes.
I'm, I'm kind of watching.
Yeah, I don't know if it's adjustable or not.
Yeah.
Okay, never, never mind.
So far, so good, it's, it's okay.
The chair's taking care of it.
I didn't see anybody available to do it, so.
Good, go. Yeah.
Okay, I'm Jeff German, I live across the street from Nemeth's over here and everything, and I agree with Raju and-
Is, is his, is his mic on, though?
Huh?
Is the mic on?
Is the mic on?
Can't see a light.
I talked really soft, so I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But I agree with what they're saying, you know, we all live up here for a reason, we have our own property, we believe in, what you do on your property is your business, as long as it doesn't interfere or impose upon anyone else. That's what's called common sense, okay? To run a commercial wedding venue, that's not an ordinary thing, that's a business, okay? Usually, when you start a business, you go out there and you make sure you got the proper zoning for your business before you put your business in. It's just common sense, and that's all I'm saying, it's just common sense, and then there's the environmental impact of all this. We used to see these nice little freshwater otters go down, and they come up the storm drain from the pond, go underneath the road, that's what was so amazing about, going to my mother-in-law's place next to us, snag some of her food and go back down underneath. I don't know if they eat food or not, but since they moved in, they haven't been there. Just, just saying, you want, you have that big pond back there, that's an environmental thing, too. You know, we have to watch out for over everything, and like I say, and any of these people over here saying, "Oh, it's this music," all that, give me their address, and I'll be happy to go drive a boombox and stick it outside their frickin' window at ten o'clock at night and blast it so they know what we're going through in the conversation.
Hello, my name is Kelly Bamford, and the special event that's on your docket today is my wedding. Our wedding is this Saturday- Our wedding is this Saturday, March 25th. In July of 2022, we toured Nemeth Manor as a possible venue for our wedding. We were immediately enamored with the location. It's absolutely beautiful and Allison and Jonathan were beyond sweet. They took their time to talk through absolutely everything that they can do for us and what their venue had to offer. In August, we signed our contract to book our date. We have kept in close touch as we plan out the details and see what still needs to be accounted for. Last Saturday, a week before our wedding, we heard from them again. We heard that we had to be here today. Two days before my wedding, the stress we had been feeling planning increased tenfold. Sorry. Allison and Jonathan have once again been super sweet and providing and ensuring that we are taken care of. The months of planning that have gone into my wedding has been completely unravelled within a week's time. Someone's wedding either is or isn't. And to the neighbors saying that any music goes past 10 o'clock, I have it in my contract and I would gladly submit it, that I am not allowed to have any music past 10 o'clock. And I would gladly even shut off the music at nine if that was better for them. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration. My name is Jessie German, and I do live across the street from the venue. I believe people should be able to do what they want to do within the code compliance. And my concern here is when I go into a business, I expect that they've gotten the correct permits, the business license, whatever was necessary to do business. And I truly feel badly for this lady who is going to have a wedding in three days with the pretense that she thought everything was in place and it wasn't. And I just don't understand why people aren't complying with laws and codes and all of that. And it's okay. You go and do something and just do it without it being under the pretenses of the laws. And then when it's not, you just go, oh, I'm sorry, I, I should have thought about that. Or maybe I'm not even sorry because I'm making income off of something and it's people's emotions, not just the neighbors that are dealing with the noisies, but people that are expecting a wedding or something. And now they're finding out that they really ever weren't legally permitted to do what they were supposed to do. I also want to comment that I do have horses across the street. They are very sensitive to noise. And maybe this lady's horses that are there aren't. There's, there's all kinds of different animals that have different reactions to different things. And I'm sure you're aware of that. But my horses get upset. I have a pregnant mare and I'm concerned about noises, fireworks, whatever across the street when it comes time for her to have her baby. So it's not just about people, it is about the animals. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello, I'm Janelle Williams. I live in Angels Camp and I'm the owner of Wallflower Event Company. Before I read what I wrote, I did want to make a comment about the fireworks. I have personally been there for that wedding and there has never been fireworks on that property, as beautiful as it would be. We have never actually had fireworks on that property. And that wedding they're speaking of actually ended at 8:30 PM, fully cleaned up. Anyways, okay. A little nervous, sorry, this is very important. What makes Nemeth Manor so special is not just the breathtaking views, romantic dock, unique glamping sites, or the rustic open floor layout, but it's the devotion and true love that Jonathan and Allison put into that property. Every day, finding or creating ways to elevate the already beautiful venue. I have been in this industry planning weddings for 12 years, five of them while living out here in Calvares County. I've worked at many venues, all different types, all with their own uniqueness, and Nemeth Manor is one of a kind. Not only do I know it, but my clients know it. From my out-of-town clients who cannot believe a place like that exists and still had their date available, to the locals who had no idea this hidden gym was there all along. Those are the amazing people that I will now need to call and tell them that they no longer can have their special day at the venue they fell in love with. And we will need to completely rearrange their entire wedding day in a matter of days to weeks. Wedding venues bring an enormous amount of business to our town. Guests coming in from weddings will fill up local hotels, restaurants, and wineries, not to mention that Nemeth Manor has a three-day package which extends the amount of extra business brought into our local business owners. And let's not forget the Music by the Lake series that they did free for attendees. So locals and out-of-towners come and relax on a Sunday afternoon to quiet music and drink wine and eat amazing food. What worries me is the fear for anyone else that wants to have a dream of opening their own venue in this county, to help grow our community and more businesses so we can continue to live here and raise our children here. And knowing that it all could be taken away as quickly as a neighbor complaining about the noise that stops it exactly and sometimes earlier than county noise ordinance has in place, only a handful of Saturdays out of the entire year and one Sunday. And it worries me as a business owner who does almost all of Nemeth Manor's weddings that I will now be losing a steady 12 or more weddings I'm used to having out of our 40 we do a year and now will not have. And making sure I can make up the difference so I may pay my bills and feed my children. And not just me, but all of our amazing vendors that we work with that also rely on this venue. I know the dream Jonathan and Ally have for this venue. I'm sorry. I know firsthand the hard work they put into this place. Yeah, sorry. From building a fancy platform on the rain, in the rain in the morning of a wedding because they were worried it would be a little too muddy for guests walking to the restroom trailer, which made us come up the phrase, if you can think it, Jonathan can build it. To Jonathan doing his nightly walk around the property, every corner of the property, just to check the noise level so he could be respectful to his neighbors, like actually goes out to far ends of the property, sitting there to making sure that it's not too loud and we have adjusted music as so. These are all just some of the small of many appreciated things they do as venue owners. And trust me, I have many more amazing stories I could share, but we would be here all day. I don't want to see their dream go away. So thank you for listening.
Hello. My name is Susan Kelleher, and I'm owner of Sweet Lilacs, an event floral company. Sweet Lilacs has been in business for the past 10 years, and I'm also co-owner of the Val Gold Country Magazine, which is placed specifically in the Calaveras Visitors Bureau. I'm speaking in support of the request for a temporary special events permit for a limited number of weddings and charitable events at Nemeth Manor. Nemeth came into my radar just last year, 2022, because of the fundraising gala for the new digestive health center at Adventist Health Sonora. This event and one-day fundraiser is targeted to expand gastroenterology services and advanced treatments specifically for both our counties. Jonathan and Allison understood this was a fundraiser for our community and met every single demand by the fundraising committee. This was not an easy task. During the planning sessions, Jonathan and Allison were very conscientious of how the event was handled and specifically how the event affected their neighbors. The event ended by 8:30. This fundraiser and one-day event raised over $250,000 for Adventist Health Sonora. Since establishing my company 10 years ago, working between Tuolumne and Calaveras County, our area is seen as a destination area for weddings because of its picturesque beauty and diverse selection of venues. Venues in our area, from barn to vineyards, from forest all the way to mountain tops, most wedding guests spend their entire weekend here, not just the one-day. They don't attend just for the one-day event. In the past five years, surprisingly, I have been involved in many weddings that range from $60,000 for the one-day event all the way to 175,000. These dollar amounts greatly benefit our local economy. I've always stated and still stand behind the statement that our area can create weddings just as well as the Napa region. I've worked weddings in those areas myself and support, and the support and professionalism of our area is completely unsurpassed. We are no longer seen as cheap, unprofessional, budget-friendly, hungry for local wedding business vendors. Please allow Jonathan and Allison to continue temporarily under the county, under, until the county fixes its zoning code, and we can continue this upward momentum to bring the revenue to our areas. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you people for actually enforcing the codes. And I've read some of your comments and rulings, and I couldn't agree more. Noise is probably the biggest problem. In fact, if I might.
How many people, probably more, noise is one of their main concerns? Put a hand up or say something.
Well, that's not too impressive. But you've got to keep in mind that there's eight of us that are really being disturbed by the noise generated by their operation. I would like to maybe just bring in a personal thing. There's a, most of the people supporting Nemeth, they all have their fingers in the pie, they're all making money off it. Those of us living next to them, we're losing money. Our property values are plummeting. In my case, I have lost, well, not really, can't blame it completely on Nemeth, but I have a rental property, unfortunately, that's about 1,200 feet facing their tent. And there's nothing in between. There's just a lake and open space. And they constantly complained about the fact that they could not entertain on their patio, couldn't have friends over, can't do anything outside on the weekends, almost, almost every Saturday and then most Sundays and Fridays. They left and they left for a couple of reasons, but one of them, they said, was they moved to the country to enjoy the wildlife, the geese, you know, nice neighbors, rural setting to raise their kids, and they couldn't find it because they're too close to Nemeth. Also, I had a highly motivated buyer that came out of the clear blue Realtors, I guess, talk, and they were words out that I'm probably going to be selling in a couple of years. So there was a couple from Southern California that fell in love with my property. We were negotiating, had a Realtor involved, they were getting down to a price. And they made the mistake of showing up one Saturday when this is going on, their rock concert-level party music, and they left. I mean, they just left. No way we're going to spend that amount of money and live in an area where I can't even enjoy being outside on the weekends. I can't entertain, I can't enjoy my patio, can't do any of this. It's, you've got to keep in mind that all these things you're hearing, we're the ones that are most affected, the eight or 10 of us right next door. Our property values, our quality of life, and even driving on Dogtown Road, how many of you have ever tried to make a left on Dogtown Road on the Highway 49? All you need is one person in front of you trying to make a left, and you're there for 10 minutes. It's the worst intersection on earth. And you may be allowed to just go right, you're still stuck there for 10 minutes. Now all we need is several hundred more cars going up and down Dogtown Road. And there's really no alternative than to get on the Highway 49. I guess you can go down, do a big loop around Gardner and the high school, but that's, but then they suffer the traffic. And you don't need more traffic up and down by the high school. Anyway, I was just trying to bring up maybe another issue besides what you've already heard, which is the, our property values are all going to suffer greatly if they continue with this operation, especially those of us right next door. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Hi. I appreciate this process, I just want to say. I'm Jolene. I'm a wedding vendor also, and so I'm not going to repeat everything everyone else has said, but I do want to say I have participated in weddings in several other counties. And so many of the issues that are being brought up, specifically noise and the road problems, there's things other venues have done to help regulate these things. So one thing I want to say is that there are, I believe it's called like a decimal monitor, and I've seen them up in trees and the DJs watch the number and they make sure it doesn't go above. And everyone is very, very cautious about it because nobody wants these problems. And then the other thing is, is many, many venues will use a shuttle service where everyone parks off-site and then the shuttle is required to bring everyone in and out. So I was thinking maybe like a temporary, let's try these solutions, see if they work, and, and just see what happens. So anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to add to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's, well, she was.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me comment on this item. Most of my neighbors have touched on most of the things that I agree with. But one of the main things is my dad had given you guys those pictures, and it shows the fence line. And that is exactly, I mean, it's less than 100 feet off the fence line, the tent is. And then the parking is maybe two to three feet off the fence line. So I have some more if you guys like my, I mean, they're kind of the same thing, but anyways, the noise is a big issue, but also the continuous traffic through there and the cars parking. My girlfriend and I, we have animals in that field and there's people, you know, that want to pet a horse, so they're putting their hands over the fence and then horses are spooked and running and the noise doesn't help either. So we usually have to pull horses into another field and lock our dogs up because they don't like the noise either. And it's just been a continuous problem, so. Anyways, that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Shannon Gazetta, and I own a six-acre property in Murphy's. I'm an event planner. I got married 20 years ago in my mom's backyard in Angels Camp. I didn't know if I was going to be able to speak after the end of this weekend. I have not coordinated an event at the property owned by Ally and Jonathan Nemeth, but I've been to the site several times. I've been really impressed by their upgrades and their preparations and their enthusiasm about not just their property, but the community. When I was reading through the materials for this meeting, I noted a few things that I wanted to point out. Weddings are not a constant. I don't think that Jonathan and Ally intend to truly host an event 365 days a year. It would be exhausting. Hosting an event is a huge undertaking. There are countless details involved with each and every event. I've heard some say, it's fine to host a family event once in a while, but actually those events are among the trickiest. Things like traffic flow and parking and noise ordinances are not necessarily as well-known and much harder to control. Having a plan involved is always a better idea. And with every event that is truly unique, there's always something learned. I hope that the neighbors along Dogtown Road have a chance to truly act on their intention for friendly relationships going forward, and I hope it's not the intention of this committee. of having enough space to allow each property owner to enjoy their home as they see fit. Part of the reason my husband and I returned home to Calaveras County was we were tired of our neighbors within the HOA constantly criticizing what was happening on our property. We bought our home a mile from where my husband grew up and specifically told our Realtor we did not want to buy any home in a homeowners' association. What is happening here seems the same as, I don't like what they're doing on their property. And unfortunately or fortunately, depending upon your point of view, Calaveras County has become a place that people want to be. It's beautiful. The photos on this room are a perfect example of why people want to come visit this area. I was not familiar, prior to reading the meeting information, that there was a term for agritourism. Being married in a rural area is a highly sought-after thing, and I completely understand not wanting to have that next door 365 days a year, but that's not the matter at hand. I urge the committee not to put out the message that private weddings are not special events. Calaveras County does not want to be known in that way. The vendors and the people who do support visitors to our county will need to move elsewhere as a result. All of the businesses who support tourism in our county will no longer be able to do so if the county is putting out a message that private weddings are not special events. When I was reading the materials, the special event code indicated that the items listed were listed to include, but were not limited to those items. Circuses, carnivals, motorbike events. So I do urge the committee to look into being collaborative and finding solutions that benefit the entire county. Thank you.
I have been in the events business for 18 years. I'm in the event rental business, and I've been doing most of my business in Calaveras and Topeka County. Yes, everybody wants to get married up here. I get calls from all over the country. We get foreign people from England, and we get them from all over parts of California. It's gorgeous, everybody wants to be up here, and I've probably toured every one of those 30-some-odd venues that have been mentioned, and I met Ally and Jonathan, and I was just so impressed. And I'm telling you, in 18 years, I've seen a lot of venue owners, a lot of farm owners that do weddings. I guess they're now considered venues, but they take such good care of their property, they're so easy to work with, they will do anything asked of them for their property and the improvements for their property. And I don't see that all the time. They're special, they're a very special couple, and I just don't understand why, there can't be some kind of compromise, because that ranch look that's up there behind you, that's what brides want right now, that's what they've wanted for about 12 years, and they've got that. And so do the 35 or so other venues that you deal with. And why there isn't a compromise when I know all those other venues have neighbors? I just don't understand why they can do them and they should be doing them because they also have beautiful properties and allow beautiful weddings, but why this is happening to them without maybe some kind of compromise? I just, I don't get it, because I have been to all those venues, and they're all in the same zone, and they all have neighbors. So why is this happening now? After 18 years, I don't get it. Thank you.
My name's Rex Whittle, and I thank you guys for letting us speak today. I really didn't have too much plan to say. I did write a letter in opposition to what's happening out there, but I kind of feel it necessary, after listening to some of these comments today, to explain our situation. We have an unimproved property right next door to Jonathan. I met Jonathan two or three years ago and over the fence line. We always had good conversations, we've been able to talk to each other, we've had some problems between us, which I addressed in my letter, and I feel it's kind of unfair here today to have somebody else get up and say that we should be ashamed of ourselves for complaining or even making remarks about this. I don't feel ashamed one bit, I feel it. I knew the letter would probably be received by Jonathan as adversarial, but it wasn't intended that way, it was just to point out what's been going on there. And I do feel that it's quite often that, you know, our complaints are perceived as just not wanting him to do anything there on his own private property, but what it gets down to is that he also, and anybody else on any adjoining property, my other neighbors, we have to treat each other with respect, and I think we have. Going forward, I think we all need to do that, and I just feel that we need to keep to the zoning. The zones are there for a reason, and I just wanted to state that today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to speak to this item? Okay. Then Gabriel, would you like to respond to any of the questions or add anything?
I'm Madam Chair, since the bulk of the responses were provided by counsel, legal counsel, I'm going to have our legal counsel provide the rebuttal to their comments.
Well, again, Commissioners, this is Julie Moss Lewis. I am a deputy county council. I, and I'm assigned right now to the planning department. Mr. Elliott has, I know nothing was stated on the record, he submitted to the commission copies of the site plan and parking plan that I believe were submitted by Mr. Nemeth. So if the Commissioners have any questions after I'm done about that site plan, they can direct them to Mr. Elliott. I have not seen these before today. I just wanted to respond to a few of the things that, the points that Ms. Kinderman raised. One of the issues she brought up was how could it be that the definition of special event in the county code would allow certain events like concerts and festivals that thousands of people would be invited to but would preclude private events such as invite-only weddings or birthday parties with only 100 people? And that's a good question, but there are rational reasons why the county might have chosen to do that. One is it might have wanted to be more generous with events to which the general public's invited to enrich local cultural life. And another reason is if you look at the definitions or the examples that are listed in the definition of special event, you're going to see events that generally happen maybe once a year on property that's otherwise used for something else. You know, a carnival that'll take place in an open field that's usually just an open field, and it might very well be that the county intended a commercial venue that was going to host private events repeatedly would apply under a different provision of the code than special event permits. They would be seeking to have a commercial event venue permitted in a location where that is a permitted or conditional use. And once that is permitted, it's my understanding from Mr. Elliott, that they don't need to apply for individual special events, and that might very well be the reason why private events like weddings and birthdays on a commercial basis are treated differently here. The other thing I'd like to just raise is that we can speculate about what the intent of the Board of Supervisors was when we, when this code was drafted, but when the language is plain, I don't know that we even get to what the Board of Supervisors intended. We are dealing with, I think, a sentence that everybody understands what it means, to which the public are invited to participate, watch, or listen. And I think that the use of that word instead of people or anyone pretty strongly suggests, I don't know that we need to go into intent, I think it plainly is meant to distinguish public from private. And the Board could have used a different word there, but it chose not to. Another thing that mostly came in through the materials submitted to the commission is there seems to be some sort of misunderstanding or sense by the applicant that if weddings do count as special events, if the commission agrees that they fit into that definition, that the permit to host them must be granted, and I just wanted to remind the commission that there are two places where denial is authorized, even if we are talking about bona fide special events. One of those bases for denial, as Mr. Elliott already discussed, is in 1787 when amplified music would impact the neighbors or the surrounds in a way that can't really be mitigated. And another important thing to look at is, it's not just 1787 that deals with special events, there's also Chapter 1783. As Mr. Elliott had mentioned, if you're applying for a special event permit, you're also, unless it's exempt under that code, you're also applying for a use permit. 1787 doesn't have any affirmative findings that you need to make when you grant it, it has some additional bases for denial that would be added to what would be considered under 1783, but it's 1783 that lists the findings required for any type of use permit, including a special event permit. And I think that if you look at 1780, I have to find my, okay. When you look at 1783, it knows that there are some other chapters in the code that might also be considered in addition to it. So if you look at 1783060, where it talks about medical marijuana administrative use permits, it says that they're subject to the provisions of 1791, which is our dispensary ordinance. And so as the commission probably recalls, when we come forward with these dispensary permits, sometimes an AUP is also required, and so the additional findings that need to be required are under 1783. And here we have 1783050, which also talks about special event administrative use permits being subject to the provisions of 1787, and I think that looking at the full context, that means looking also at 1787, not one or the other. I think that's pretty clear from the way 1783 was written and the past practices of the, of the planning department. Another issue that I wanted to address is, and this is sort of a big one, there seems to be a general assumption that if we're prohibiting this wedding, we are really prohibiting all weddings. And the first part of that I want to address is there's a lot of discussion about other wedding venues that have been allowed, supposedly allowed, but I've spoken with Mr. Elliott, and it's my understanding, and he can tell me if I'm wrong, that none of those other venues listed have applied for a special event permit. And so is it problematic if they're not permitted in their zone or not applying for a permit? Yes, that could potentially be problematic. I don't have an understanding of why there might have been more complaints about one than another or why the enforcement is happening. I have, I don't have all the details of the enforcement aspect of this, that's not what we're here for, but I just wanted to know, Mr. Elliott, can you confirm, have any of those people listed on the list provided by Ms. Kinderman? Have you issued permits for any of those wedding venues?
None of them.
Okay. So, oh, I'm sorry, did I not have my gun? Okay. So the other thing is, is that weddings are not prohibited. The county has long treated individual weddings that a person might hold at their own house as an accessory use to a single-family residence, which in our code is clearly defined as the type of thing that one would reasonably expect to be allowed from somebody who has a house. And one of those things is certainly if they have an occasional wedding for their daughter, for their birthday party, for their father, for a friend, that is not prohibited under county code, that is considered part of a regular, single-family residential use. And if, as I mentioned before, if the, if a person wanted to have a commercial event venue where they are having private events on a repeated basis, there are zones where that is allowed in the county. They don't need to depend on Chapter 1787. They could apply for a rezone to the REC zone, which is, for example, a zone that's listed as compatible with their general plan designation. Can we promise they would get the rezone? We cannot, but there are zones such as REC where the use would be so similar to other types of lodging, country club, and event type of commercial, those types of commercial businesses, that they wouldn't need to apply for special event permits because they would be permitted as the venue that they're trying to be. And then finally, I would like to just say that, you know, I'm hearing now that this permit is not just for, it's not really for five events, it's for one event, and I sympathize and understand the circumstance that the, you know, soon-to-be-bride is in here, but this commission would not have authority to approve even a single special event if there is no underlying use in the zone in which it's permitted. So anyway, that's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Would you guys like to speak or have your representative speak?
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time, and I appreciate all the comments by the attendees, both the opposition as well as the letters of, the supporting comments and those by counsel and staff. And so with that, I've got a few, just a few comments here. Go back to my page. I wanted to first mention that the appellant's here have, were operating because they thought it was allowed as part of their agribusiness, they made a mistake, and they obviously have come forward to try to get a permit now, but they came in, they obtained a business license, they did what they thought they were supposed to do in the county. We realize that they do have to get a use permit, not a use permit, an administrative use permit here, but they did attempt to do what, comply with the regulations, and they thought they'd done so. And I know someone had commented that they're just scofflaws and they just show up here and try to disturb the public peace, and that's not what's happened here, they've tried to do the right thing. So just want to mention a couple, respond to some other facts here. In this photograph, the neighbors have said they're right up against our fence. The building department has actually measured it, and they're 102 feet away from the fence. So in fact, they're not right up against the fence. And I, and as I just respond to a few of these comments, I want to remind you, good planning is about facts supported by substantial evidence and not just complaints. The other thing here that is not supported under any circumstances, there have never been fireworks on this property. There are activities going on at other locations up and down that road, perhaps they are confusing what's going on on other properties, but there have never been fireworks at this property. A lot of hyperbole is used, we understand because they're upset, they're concerned, we understand people want to protect their property, they want the neighbors to be good neighbors, but the word constant, 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 constants was used so many times. And in reality, it is hyperbole because there were only in the last year eight events at this property. That's it. Eight events. So that is not constant, although that is what you're hearing from the neighbors. I don't know how constant can equate to eight events. It's impossible. So once again, facts are supported, good planning includes facts supported by substantial evidence. facts supported by substantial evidence. And there's no substantial evidence here that there's constant noise from eight events on this property in an entire year. Okay. Other comment. A lot of comments about noise. I appreciated the comment about the decibel meter. Something like that definitely is appropriate condition of approval. Once again, the issues with noise can all be addressed with conditions of approval. Same with the traffic. People could be shovelled. There are ways of handling these types of concerns of the neighbors. I confirm the proximity to the fence. I've mentioned that. Let's see. Once again, I appreciate Ms. Moss's comments as well. The result of this determination, however, is to render events at 25 or more locations in this county as unlawful. And I note that she'd mentioned, council had mentioned that no permits have been issued because they haven't applied for any. And here, the Neemus are being criticized, and they're trying to apply for a permit. And yet you have 33, well, actually, it would be 25 that are in the rural zones and had not even bothered to apply for a permit. And we certainly don't want to put them out of business. What we'd like you to do is modify, is encourage the Board to modify the code so that weddings can be allowed. The other 33 venues, I appreciate the legislative history and trying to understand why that language was in the ordinance originally. Julie had mentioned that there may be, maybe once a year, they expected a large event on a piece of property. But at all of these 25 other venues, they're not just holding once-a-year events. They are holding continuing events throughout the year in similar zones, the same and similar zones to our clients. And Julie said, once again, you are not able to issue something that is not consistent with the zoning ordinance, but we are arguing that, in fact, this is permitted because it is a special event. We think it does fit under that definition, and therefore you could issue this permit, which at this juncture is just for one, for one event because of the time that has elapsed. And so with that, I don't have any other comments. And I'm here to answer any other questions you might have. And we so appreciate you listening to us and everyone else on this very important issue in your community.
Just one question.
Yes, Commissioner.
You say that there have only been eight events over the past 12 months?
Yep. Yes, sir.
And yet, the permit application was for five events starting in January.
Would you like?
Yes.
So, Jonathan, again, to clarify, we had eight events, we had eight weddings in 2022, and we had one fundraiser that was mentioned. So, we had nine total events, eight weddings, and one fundraiser. We did request for, and that was in 2022, we did request for five for this year, for the beginning of the year, per the direction of the Code Enforcement and Planning Department said we needed to apply for a special event permit to have weddings.
So, you had eight events in 2022?
Correct. Eight weddings.
And then weddings?
And one fundraiser.
So, more than eight?
So, ninety events in 2022. Thank you.
If I may ask a question, though, while I'm up here. If we were told to get a special event permit, and I also want to go on record, we applied for our business license in 2020, December 2020, and we issued our business license in 2021 in February. So, we didn't have any events prior to receiving our business license. And we did it specifically with just saying event venue. We didn't try to hide it or disguise it as anything else. We were very transparent from the beginning what we were trying to accomplish. Planning, building, health, and the assessor's office all signed off. We had a visit from the building department before they signed off to visit our property, to go over what needed to be addressed before they could sign off, which we did, therefore they signed off. We were then told that we needed to get a special event permit, and now we are told weddings aren't special events. So, it's kind of confusing why we were directed towards that. And then we don't even know what, even if it's not us, what other venue, what do they need to get for a permit if weddings don't qualify as special events? And if we want to host a fundraiser, which is not open to the public, per se, you know, what kind of, what kind of permit is necessary?
Thank you.
I have some questions. Either Jonathan or you can answer. What was the intent when you purchased the property? What did you intend to use it for?
Yes, absolutely. So, our intent was to, and we actually brought our architect here, Ezra. So, we contracted with them back in 2020 because we intended to build a special event venue, which we applied for the permit, and live on residence. So, it is the intention that Allie and I would be kind of caretakers of our property.
Were you aware of the zoning when you purchased the property and the limitations of the zoning?
Yes. So, we have correspondence with Gina prior to purchasing.
I'm not sure who Gina is.
Gina Catherine is a Level Four Planner.
Oh, okay.
Prior to purchasing, we told her all of our intentions. She let us know what would be allowed or what wouldn't be allowed, what type of permits we would need if we wanted to do certain things. We would eventually like to open a small bed and breakfast, which is allowable under a conditional use permit. But we also understand it's quite a process. So, you know, we needed to work our way up to that. And working with the architects, we're still working on like what our overall design is. But it was also conveyed that we were allowed to have weddings, and that's why we applied for the business license to do so.
Did you ask specifically for weddings, or did you ask for special events when you spoke?
No, we asked for weddings.
For what?
And I have correspondence too back in 20, last year in April, where we had, I had asked specifically, do you need to know the type of events for this AUP, whether it's weddings or a fundraiser or anything? And they're like, nope, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, the type of event. We just need to know the, like, the max headcount you expect, which is why our application's at 300. We are not typically expecting 300 people at a wedding. Our average wedding is 150 or less.
Thank you.
Do you have additional questions?
So, I actually was here when the special event ordinance was created, because I'm older than dirt, and have been here off and on a long time. So, at the time, I can say that the intention was that residential properties would be allowed to have several events a year, a wedding for their daughter, a retirement party, a yard sale, and a fundraiser for the organization they're involved with, without going through any special process. It wasn't intended that residential properties would have a weekly sort of schedule. So, you know, looking back in hindsight, you know, as I read through all of this in the last week or so, I can see that the wording chosen and the definitions is less than clear and certainly open to interpretation. But it is very clear in our zoning ordinance that the primary use of rural residential property is as a residence and not as a commercial venue. And it is absolutely true that we have people hosting weddings all over the county on properties that are zoned, all sorts of things. So, and certainly, there are bed and breakfasts on rural residential properties, and they host generally smaller weddings. And I think the only reason that we are seeing this all today is because you did submit for a permit, which certainly was the right thing to do, but that there seems to be a history here of disturbances to the neighbors, or something that the neighbors feel disturbs their ability to enjoy their property. And so that is just a huge problem. We are a county that is completely driven by complaints. We don't, nobody from code compliance drives around the county looking for problems. So, when there are complaints, that's when it gets looked at more closely. Is there something you'd like to add? Yeah, step up.
So, speaking of that, Louis Belonowski, who is here, had actually mentioned in one of his complaint letters on our hearing, that he has complained about other venues for the past three years and had never received any.
He has complained about one other venue, it appears.
Right, for the past three years.
That's one person. So, I don't know what happened with it. I can't speak to what happened with that complaint. I don't know anything about it. That's, every complaint that is made doesn't necessarily come in front of the Planning Commission. We wouldn't necessarily know anything about it.
Understood.
Yeah. It's when somebody actually submits a permit that we see something, and then we see all the associated paperwork.
So, just curious, if I had not submitted a permit, I wouldn't have this issue?
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, I'm saying.
Sad question.
If the neighbors were suddenly sending lots of letters in, yes, you would have an issue.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I would like to ask a question of you guys because I'm not positive here, but I believe I saw posters last summer up around the county promoting live music at your venue, like on Saturday or Sunday afternoon. So, I'd like you to speak to that.
Yes, absolutely. So, you're absolutely correct. So, we promoted a Music by the Lake series, under the understanding that, under agrotourism, we could promote our property, our venue. There was obviously no wedding. And it was live music from 12 to 3 on Sundays.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds like a special event.
Yeah. Yeah. That's clearly a special event.
So, under agrotourism, are we not allowed to?
Agrotourism in the zone requires an AUP as well.
It does? Okay. So.
And whether that would be agrotourism or not by definition is a whole nother question, though it's not in front of us today. We're all looking. And at this point, you know, it is just tragic that this young woman has been planning a wedding there and is, you know, we are put in the position of causing you to go ahead with it without your permit or, you know, breaking her heart. That's just a terrible situation for everybody involved here. And certainly, I hope she didn't just hear about this three days ago. I hope that she was informed that this process was happening. So, I'm not even sure what I think about all of it. I think that the county has quite a bit of responsibility here, and that regardless of what happens here today, that we need to address our special events piece of our ordinance. In the long run, we're in the middle of a zoning code update, and I have been pushing for changes to our special event definitions and criteria for some time, and also for enforcement of our permits. So, but I am quite disturbed by the number of complaints. I think that there are mitigations that could be done that would allow a wedding to take place on your property safely and without disturbing the neighbors. But I don't think we're in a position to resolve all of that here today in the time we have available to us. And so while I always want to find that compromise, find that way for everybody to agree on something that could work for everyone to enjoy their property without disturbing the neighbors, I don't see that we're going to do that here today. But that's just me. So, let's hear from everyone else.
Well, I think we've heard marvelous arguments from both sides as to whether an operation such as this should be permitted where it is. But those arguments as to what should be are arguments that are made to a legislative-type function. We are here today serving a judicial function. And you might say, oh, that's just a technicality. But no, our duty today is to apply the law the way it is now, not to consider whether we should, whether the law should be changed, or whether we could make some accommodation that would result in a better situation for everybody. We have to look at what the law is and what we are doing. And I understand that the Neemus tried to do the right thing with the county. And we are here today to consider a special event application, application for an administrative use permit for special event. We are obligated, in our judicial function, just as any judge would be in court, to look at the law as it is. And the law says special events means an organized activity, assembly or event, to which the public is invited to watch, listen, or participate. And these events, the ones that we have, are considering today, at least the weddings, are not, are not events to which the public is invited to watch, listen, or participate. Certainly, at my wedding, I would have been appalled if all of a sudden 250 other guests showed up expecting to celebrate along with me that I didn't even know. But that's really what the public, it isn't that the participants are members of the public. Here, it's the public as a whole is invited to watch, listen, or participate. And it is not a special event. We cannot grant a special event permit for something that is not a special event. Now, I think one thing that's become clear today is that there is a need for the county. There's considerable emotion and logic being applied to both sides as to whether something, a property such as this should be permitted to carry on this sort of event, an event where the public is not invited, but individuals are invited. And I think, as raised by applicant's attorney, that the, that there could be a possible amendment to the statute, to the ordinance, or, as suggested by County Council, that there might be a possible rezoning to permit such things. That is not, I'm not saying it should be done, but that's where this needs to be heading, is to a legislative solution in the county that they can reach the compromises involved. I feel we are bound to deny this permit because it is not a special event. And that really is, as far as I'm concerned, my duty is to follow the law as it is, and that's the current law.
You know, being the newest member, I don't think people should be left with the idea or opinion that if they file for a special event, it's going to be granted. I think each one has to be approved, and AUP has to be given for that event. So, just to assume that if I apply for a special event, it's going to happen, that may not necessarily be the case.
Thank you.
I actually was going to say, I actually could make my way to a wedding be a special, being a special event. I could make that definition work. It might be a tad bit of a convoluted definition, but I could make that. But that doesn't solve the problem before us today, which is the neighbors are opposed to this. And they have brought forth, there are plenty of people here explaining why they are having issues with it. And so even if I was to say this is a special event, I'm familiar with Dogtown Road. And so even if I was to say this is a special event, I'm familiar with Dogtown Road. I know what that area is like. I think that there are significant obstacles to getting a permit for a 300-person wedding that would take place every week or two all through the summer season. So that's where I'm left. I am not, you know, I can't come down hard on that it's not a special event, but I think there are other issues before us and that I think is what Commissioner Tremonti is saying. It's, it's really not just about what we call something. It's about can it meet all the criteria in front of you? So just because you applied for something is no guarantee that you will get it. Are we ready to hear the recommendation?
Yeah.
I, you've, you've had a chance to speak.
I didn't know the record was closed.
I was gonna say.
I just said, well.
Come, come on up.
I'm so sorry. You've been very gracious with your time.
We just want to know this, and I don't know if this makes a difference, since the record was open still, that's why I raised my hand, I beg your pardon. Do the neighbors oppose the wedding this weekend? That's what we would like to know. If the, if the neighbors would agree to the wedding this weekend with sound attenuation and the condition, we would just, we would be curious if they, if they actually oppose this wedding. They keep talking about constant activities. We want to know if they might oppose just this one. And I don't know if we, if you would like to ask them that or not. My request is that you might ask them.
I would like you to. I think we've been spectacularly generous with accepting much into the record. And now we are going to close the public comment portion out there. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I don't think that it would be appropriate for us to ask the audience and, and the neighbors what their opinion is of this because I think you've heard from the commission what we believe our responsibility is here today. So if you would like to speak to them privately outside and work something out among yourselves, we can't be part of that.
And we're not licensing a special event.
And I think that's what Sarah wanted to hear is don't get in the middle. So I, I believe we are ready to hear the recommendation.
Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, our staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number 2023-004, denying 2023-010 appeal and upholding the planning director's denial of AP 2022-060.
Still moved.
We're going to discuss the resolution.
Sorry, I was gonna say, I think, I think Commissioner Lattish and I have a couple of typos at least.
Yeah.
I mean, okay.
So we have, and we have an amended resolution before us.
The last time we received a staff report, we received.
That was on Monday.
Arrived in your email just a couple days.
It was, I believe it was Monday that there was an amended staff report and resolution issued. So that's, that's the one that we're looking at. But I believe there's a, a typo in a citation on page one in finding one. I believe that the citation should be to 17.83020A as opposed to .93.
Yep.
And then at the very, and then I'll let Commissioner Lattish thinking you have another, but at the very end, on the last page of the resolution, I think this is just a formatting issue such that finding five is kind of not separated from the evidence paragraph preceding it. So there should be a paragraph break and then that would make what is labeled as finding five, finding six. It's just formatting, nothing substantive.
And I have some suggestions. The, I think it'd be good at the very first whereas, talking about an application for special events administrative use permit, AUP. After that, we'd put in, in parentheses, put in a citation to Calaveras Code, Chapter 17.87. And on, let's see, the, the second page, the first full paragraph, the one that starts with two potential uses allotted in the zones. I think we should add the, well, where it says two potential uses in the zone and then those users were identified, I think we should say by the planning director as requiring. So we'd see where the source of that identification is. Then I personally think there isn't, the, the evidence is stated under finding number three about that property is not adequate in land area. I don't think, I don't see where we have sufficient evidence to make that determination.
I agree.
That does not mean that we don't, that, since under the, the usual administrative use permit provisions, all four conditions have to be satisfied. The fact that number three, we don't have sufficient evidence on that would not destroy that.
So.
I don't know, I don't know if the others agree with me, but.
If that's the case, I just was wondering what the commission would like to put under the evidence section of the reso, if it's going to be amended. So would we say the subject property is adequate in land area?
No, we don't have adequate, we just don't leave that finding.
I think the recommendation was to strike that particular finding.
Strike the whole finding and evidence. No, I wouldn't say we have.
Yeah, I don't know one way or the other, but I don't think that there, it's clear that it's not sufficient.
Okay, with that, that, those are my suggestions.
Okay, so we've had a motion. Do we have a second?
And what was the motion? Now that we've got the.
To approve the amended resolution.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. So the decision of the planning director is upheld. And Sarah, would you like to provide the information on an appeal?
I'm sorry. No, that's okay. Um, so the planning commission's decision may be appealed to the board of supervisors. And I admittedly do not have the timeframe in front of me.
Within 15 calendar days.
I was going to guess that within 15. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your very polite and considered comments. I know it's disappointing. Okay, let me find my agenda. We are.
We're still here.
We're still here. Don't go anywhere.
No.
No, no, we're done with your item. The item is finished. There's a couple items. I'm telling these guys I can't go anywhere.
So do I tell my clients that Calaveras is closed for private events, some private properties that are working as venues?
You don't expect us to answer that?
Yeah.
That's what I'm gonna have to say so I don't have any heartbroken minds.
So we have no informational items. Do the commissioners have any reports that they'd like to share?
Certainly not.
I'm sorry, I, I don't have a report, except being new, I don't have the background information for the Jeffreys. If someone could send me that information.
This, it's still continued.
It's still in our process.
Same process.
So there's not been a staff report sent out regarding this?
There will be one. That I suspect is getting significant revisions.
Okay, okay, so I, I don't, if you get up to speed, because I will be up to speed.
Because you will, you'll be as up to speed as we are.
Prior to the continued hearing date, a new agenda and staff report will be published.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
But that was a good catch. And Commissioner Lattish, do you have a report?
I would just suggest that the county make clear what the status of a situation like this is if an appeal is filed within 15 days. Or during that 15 days, what is the status of this determination by the planning director?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify. So the question is if a, if, if an individual or an entity applies for a permit and that permit is denied by the planning director and the person does submit a timely appeal, which has not yet been adjudicated.
Well, of course, they've filed the administrative appeal to us.
Yes.
Now, it's, it's unclear to me whether it, during that period, the, there was, and then now, we've decided it and there's this 15 days and then an appeal. It, it raises the question as to if they have the wedding this weekend.
I don't believe, and, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that is specifically addressed in, in the code.
It talks about after they, they apply, that sort of everything's on hold until a decision is made. I'd look that up. It's not clear to me what.
Sure they could.
I mean, our, our position is that it's, a permit is required, everybody's seating a permit is required to have this type of event. They don't have a permit. So I, I don't think that they have a right to have, a right to have the weddings right now. That's our position. Up to the commission to decide how to interpret the code.
And that would be the common sense interpretation.
Well, except when, when you're dealing with the courts and then it's an appeal.
Yes, exactly. Not necessarily common sense.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, if I may just add that if they went ahead and had this event on Saturday, like they had two Saturdays ago and one prior to that, even after the denial notice was given, it still constitutes a violation of the code because they're operating without a valid permit. So, but the question that I've always posed.
So I would just say, because this wasn't on the agenda, I mean, I think it was a very good question, Commissioner Lattish, and I did, you know, I do want to say that I do not believe that that specific question is addressed in our zoning code. So it's a good question.
I'm just saying, I think the county should clarify.
Understood.
And I'm not trying to.
No, and I, I.
Try it today.
Got it. Don't disagree because it's, it's right, it's not in there specifically.
Good.
Yep. Okay, so does our planning director have a report?
Madam Chair, we're still on track with, coming up with our zoning ordinance update. I think beginning in June, we're going to start having the community meetings or study sessions with the planning commission. We're currently working on some final drafts of that particular document. And as I had mentioned in prior planning commission meetings, there are going to be other projects that are going to be coming through the pipeline. And we intend to have all those hearings while Commissioner Lattish is away. So.
Say that last word again. I missed the laugh. Oh.
I was just joking.
Oh.
We're gonna have all these very, you know, challenging hearings while you're gone.
Yes, right, of course. Yeah, well, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but again, so the, the ordinance ordinances are on the corner. That's coming up. And we have some other projects that are coming through the pipeline that we're making their ways to the planning commission. So we're gonna have a quite busy first half of the year. Going forward, we'll, we'll have to see how, how things go as far as workload is concerned. Thank you.
May I ask a question? I don't want to break the Brown Act or, but it's not on the agenda. So I mean, I don't want to develop, like a free throw conversation here, but I'm a little concerned. We've all lived in this county a long time. And we have two commissioners that recuse themselves. I'm just curious, I mean, don't you have to have a monetary interest in something in order to recuse? I mean, I didn't, I felt okay. I've been in the hot seat enough in my career to sit up here, but it has been nice with five. I'm sorry.
And so I'd be happy to, to have additional conversations with you about that. I will just say, I will just say that you raise a very interesting point, which is there are legal requirements for when individuals must recuse themselves. And then I would say in addition to that, you know, sometimes folks feel that they have a conflict of interest such that they cannot be unbiased and they feel like they may need to recuse themselves, even if maybe they're not legally obligated to. But we can absolutely have that conversation.
Well, I, I appreciate Julie sharing. I mean, I, I go up and down Dogtown Road every day. I mean, but I don't, not within 300 feet or 300 yards, whatever you shared with that, you said that, you know, I mean.
Sure, and, and. No, and I, and, and we can absolutely talk about that. But yes, no, that's not, that's not legal. You're right, it's a small community and that does not create legal conflicts of interest in general. Yeah.
You're right.
I just also wanted to, because I've been through a lot of these before. I don't think we've ever had a situation where we've had two recusals on the same, at the same time. There have been situations where people didn't, where commissioner didn't have a legal conflict of interest, but they personally felt that they couldn't. It's not common. So it's not something that we would expect to happen on most of these.
A unique situation.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mind, I don't, I, I appreciate all the comments. I appreciate the way this commission works together. It'd just be nice to have five, but we can have five.
Yeah. And that's why we're glad you agreed to be a part of the.
And, and in general, you do. So, yeah.
At least four.
Yes. And I don't think you need to reconvene as the AHB since that matter has been taken off.
Right, it's been removed from the agenda. So we are adjourned as the planning commission as of 11:46.